Okay, I got seven thirty.
Good evening. The time is seven thirty and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. I have no changes tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
And make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Ralph, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the September twenty first Board of Selectmen meeting. Has everyone been able to review those?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, John. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, I do want to let the Board of Selectmen in the town know that I did hear back from the Department of Public Health this week regarding our bond project as far as looking for our own water source. And we did get approval from the Attorney General's office and DPH to move forward with that. There is a formality, a letter that must be mailed to me now or emailed to me, and I was told I should have that by the end of the week, but the review process has concluded and it just goes to the Commissioner to sign. So we're able to move forward with that and we're excited to get to work on that project. And that's all I have, so we'll move to public comment. Anyone in the audience? Nothing in the chat. Okay, our, so we'll move on. Our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, is here with our monthly budget report. This is also our financial meeting. So, I want to thank Tom for coming out and putting this together for us.
Hello, everyone? So, in front of you, you do have your monthly budget report through September thirty. The first couple pages are the revenues and then after that are expenditures. On page one, account ending in zero zero two one three, we have what's called a municipal transition grant. These funds came in a little bit earlier in the year, but we're trying to research them a little bit more. And as you know, the state has put in a cap on the mill rate of thirty-two four six for motor vehicle property tax. And during the governor's budget cycle, they had listed an dollar amount of the two thirty-three eight thirty-nine. As we were, our mill rate is lower than the cap at three-two forty-four. We were not anticipating that we were going to get these funds this year, but it appears that they're basing the reimbursement on the prior year's grant list. So that was a, the grant list in that year was thirty-five oh one, prior to the revale. So there is some funds here that we've received for what's called the municipal transition grant. On the oh oh two one four, which is a miscellaneous grant, that's usually the payments that we receive for the dial-a-ride. But also in this allotment, you'll see a four thousand fifty-six dollar grant, which is more or less a Help America vote grant from the absentee ballots. So that grant will have, that, though we, those funds will be utilized by the elections in the town clerk's office to, you know, carry out the absentee ballots as well as some other election matters. We've gone through the majority of the other, some of the town clerk fees that have been coming through very, very strong have tapered a little bit this, you know, because it's gone down a little bit this month. But we'll have to see if that continues to be a trend or if it was just the other two months were very high.
You're talking about the conveyance there?
Yeah, yeah. You see it dip a little bit and that can also tend to trend when interest rates trend.
And we had some big sales previously too.
Some big sales. So it was a little bit of that, a little bit of the recording fees, but you'll see, see those type of things. Just, you know, for September, it was down a little lower than it had been, but still doing very well for the year. On the next page, oh oh four oh one, we do have some stronger investment gains than we've had. And some of that is related, directly related to stiff, the state investment fund that we're allowed to go into through, through July to now. That rate has been around one point four five to two, recently up to as high as two nine seven, more in the two-two-five range. When we were putting the budgets together, that was trending around point one. So that fund is done, you know, the return on that has been very good so far, which is anytime we can get in the twos since, you know, lately, that's really, really good right now relative to what we've been seeing. We'll have to see how that, if that trend continues or not. We don't see that as high in the other banks. We see some, you know, decent returns on some of the banks and then there's other banks that do different items. But the stiff fund is definitely, is trending high.
Tom, you asked a question. What's the one above that, three-five-four?
So three-five-four, that was other revenue. We did touch upon that last month. Let me see if I have my notes here. Yeah, so that was the, that was, mostly that revenue was related to the members' equity distribution from KERMA. So KERMA every year gives, if they can, they give what's called a members' equity distribution. So we tried to budget around the twenty, twenty thousand or so, assuming that that money's coming in. And in this year, it was, it was better than that, so that was what that money is.
KERMA came, I'll just add, and did a little presentation with us at Town Hall and I told them next year they, they have to bring the big check because they gave us a little check.
So that's a one-time thing that'll be that number for the rest of the year?
No, I mean, other revenue is just that, it's other revenue. It can be, it can go, it can swing up and down a little bit based on, you know, changes in accruals. It can be other, other items that come in that are, that don't fit into a different category. Sometimes it might, you know, between that and then other finances, things like sometimes you'll get a sheeted money that'll be usually go other finance. Sometimes if the Board of Ed has like a closeout encumbrance, it'll go in that. So the number will change, but the main component of that is the KERMA member, you know, distribution, equity distribution. All right, on the expenses. On page two, you can see that we're, you know, we're getting close on election supplies with also having to do a budget referendum later in the year, but that's, those are things that are somewhat anticipated with the governor's election as well. And that's kind of these additional funds that we're receiving in the grants, although don't, you know, go into the expense. They go into the revenue to help offset any of those overages in theory. On the page three, the technology budget, still doing quite well over time. You know, if you're looking at the time of this part of the year, it's, it's over where it should be. Those, I think we just, that was discussed at the last financial meeting, what those components are, so that's that area. Page five, police private duty, strong, you know, continues to be strong. If you look at the month-to-date, this month, it's, it's a big number and, and what I did notice was this was a five-pay month. So in a five-pay month, you know, that month-to-date looks pretty, pretty high, you know, so. And then the last two were, the last two weeks, we're about two, two to three thousand above what the averages were before. So a lot of private duty, I know there's been a lot of, there's a company that's doing some fiber and it seems like everybody, all the, all the police are working on those and trying to get, you know, to keep everyone safe as these companies do work within the town.
With that, when we have other police in town, does that run through that same line item?
Other police in town, they build, that town builds it.
Okay.
And then cruiser support, you'll see that was slightly over. That was, that line item was when it was budgeted this year, there were two more cruisers that needed to have, it's like a, it's almost like a modem connection within the car. And that's, then, then we had budgeted with the body cams, you had to have these connections in the cars. So those were a couple of things, so that'll have to be, you know, watched and budgeted for next cycle. Lot of different items in police with relation to the accountability standards. There's a lot of different rules and fees and charges that keep coming about. And we'll, you know, we'll have to keep watching that and, and obviously they'll have to be budgeted for as the mandates require the, these different types of items that come through. I think those were the areas that I wanted to touch upon in this report, and they were. So thank you.
Now, I have a quick question. Are there any other areas of concern that you have that raise any red flags to you or any other areas that you think would do better that you haven't talked about at all in general?
Is this today or, you know, we have discussed other?
It's just overall, overall.
I mean, you know, obviously gas, diesel is still continuing to be a concern. There's been some drop in the price of gasoline, diesel has some drop, but still above what we budgeted. Gas is getting closer to being where, in a, in a place where we budgeted. And, and those are, the gas and diesel contract through CROG, I'm sorry, the gasoline contract through CROG generally goes, we have to get the information into them in October, it usually comes out in the January timeframe. And then the diesel is usually around the February timeframe where we know, you know, when those contracts come through for the next fiscal year. You know, we talked about last time, the probate court was slightly over. We talked about on the, on the, the, the Public Works, the hazardous waste. There was a calculation change in the way that assessment was done, as well as just with the activity from various events. You know, there's, it's hard to say with good and bad. I mean, we always try to do review. All, all department heads try to monitor and keep the budgets within line and, you know, go and get the things that they need. And, and we'll try to, we'll try to do the best to hold the line on items, so we do that as a goal throughout the year. One of the other areas, it looks like it could possibly become an issue as a municipal agent of the elderly, it's close. But if you look at the percentage of what should be left, what is left, we're a little bit below where we should be. Those are, more or less your bus drivers, your gasoline and diesel for all the, the seniors that require, you know, transportation to various locations, but that's a tough one. We try to, try to hold the line on the budget, but we also try to make sure that we are able to provide enough service to the people that need it in, in the time of need. So that's it, that's one that, you know, the Board of Selectmen's Office does a good job of helping review that with the Senior Center Director.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Next on the agenda is something that we had discussed at our last meeting and I was asked to put this on, and this is a discussion of our transfer station hours, specifically in regards to the summer. And I think it was Bobby who suggested permanent summer hours. And so I reached out to our Labor Attorney just to make sure that we could do that permanently. And he advised that, that the hours can be adjusted seasonally. It is in the union contract for this specifically. So we actually don't need to take a vote on this, but I'd like to get consensus from the board on this, that this is something that you would like and this would be, we would change to have summer hours permanent going forward between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And I did check with our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, and he is very much on board with this. And, and he said that he also spoke with Matt and Roger. I don't know if he spoke with Roger. I know he spoke with Matt and I know that they've been in favor of this in the past. So I don't see why we, we can't make this permanent with fixed hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day. But I, I would like to get consensus from, from the Selectmen that this is something that, that you all agree on.
Well, that was why I brought it up originally. I talked to both Matt and Roger and they're the only two that work permanently at the transfer station, and they were both for it. They thought it would be easier to have the same days year after year. They can put it on the sign, it can be permanently posted, they don't have to change dates from one year to the next and...
And as you said last time, Bobby, I mean, that's what, how everybody thinks, that summer, Memorial Day, Labor Day, it makes sense.
It's something that we don't have to keep talking about, you know? It's just, just set it in and leave it.
So there's consensus from the board, I take it?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we'll, we'll make this change going forward. Thank you. All right, that, that's an easy one. Next is something that I, I had put on the agenda and we'll put it on, you know, the agenda going forward as far as discussions of the American Rescue Plan and funds. And I wanted to just give a little update. As you know, the American Rescue Funds came out of the COVID-19 pandemic and each municipality was allocated a certain amount of funds based on factors, you know, like population. And so the town of Portland was awarded through two tranches, a total of two million seven hundred forty-two thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents. And of that, we have spent, we used one point one million on a water and sewer project, you remember, and we are moving forward with that. We also had used one hundred eighty-four thousand on body cameras for the police department, as well as recently a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for improvements to the land use office. And that was digitizing records, online permitting, and also GIS mapping. So there's a couple, there's several areas where, where this board can take a look and, and look at needs. So one of the things I did was I included in your packet the report that the Long Range Capital Commission had given us back in February. And so this, you know, we, I went through this and a lot of the items that they had suggested or recommended, we've done. So if you look at the list, the first one is the high school track replacement. Thankfully, we, we received that bond to help cover the cost of that. We've done the, the fire department, the SCBA compressor replacement, the Hearst tool replacement. We funded library, the library security cameras. We funded the assessor land use maps. We funded the truck diagnostics sensor software has been completed, the air compressor, sand blaster. The technology department, we funded computers in the budget. We funded the reevaluation in the budget in the, in the capital line. We also funded the telemetry, the SCADA system. And so a lot of these we've, we have addressed. There, there's our several other items that, you know, we can take a look at. The two, the two I'd like to open up for discussion today, one, one item that I know it's on the list and it's a big ticket item is Company Two, and that would be Engine Two replacement with the fire department. And so this, this would, if the board is interested, it, it's a larger expense, but I do feel like it is a very necessary and appropriate use of ARPA funds. And I know, I don't think Bob is here. I know Sean, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the current state of?
Yeah, it's, Engine Two was purchased in nineteen ninety-eight. Generally, you focus on and you prepare yourself to replace an engine every twenty years because of the increase in the different technologies and NFPA standards with safety. Over the past year, this truck's had some issues where we've had a little bit of availability issues in getting components for it. And I think this is, one way or another, the truck's got to be replaced. It's got to be, be replaced soon so we don't incur a million-dollar cost on an engine. The price keeps escalating. I was talking to Ray Sajak, who builds fire trucks. He specced our tanker for us. Cummings, their engines went up ten percent. He said the cost of an engine right now is going up about ten thousand dollars a month. And I just think this is something that the whole town needs, the whole town benefits from. And it's something we can get off our capital lease program and open that up for other things. And it's also something where we don't incur higher taxes for the residents.
Remind me again, how much money we have left? I have it right here. We have, by my calculations, we have one million three hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents. Gotcha. So one point three three, let's say.
Sean, for us who don't know what Engine Two is equipped with, give us a brief synopsis. What's on Engine Two?
Engine Two carries seven hundred and fifty gallons of water. It has a pump that pumps twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute. It has, it's a drafting vehicle, which means we can go to a brook, we can go to a water supply where there isn't a hydrant and draft off that so we can supply other engines. It carries six people. It's equipped with air packs for six, or five pa, five passengers. And you also have, I believe it's five extra air packs on it. Has one, two, three crosslays, which are hoses, carries five hundred feet of five-inch hose. So when you hit a hydrant, which means you come to a hydrant, you lay that hose down, you're able to go at least five hundred feet to place your truck where you need it. So it's, that truck runs ninety percent to ninety percent of the calls.
I said, that's our main response vehicle.
I was just gonna ask you if it was?
Because of the amount of drivers in that area, it goes sometimes a lot more than it does Engine One and the latter because we are there, so we take it and then Engine One and the lad will come afterwards when the driver comes in.
Because this, this truck carries so much water, does it also help support Company Three and, and the country too?
Oh, this, these trucks, all the trucks respond to the whole town.
And this is a key component to mutual aid too?
This is our, this is our mutual aid vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
And we, so we go, this goes to Middletown for standby, goes East Hampton, Glassamere, all our mutual aid towns.
How do you?
And also has a Hearst tool on it.
With fire, with fire vehicles, how do you gauge their age? Do you look at mileage? Do you look at hours? How do you do that?
You go by, NFPA sets these standards because, so you have to keep the liability in mind. So let's, for instance, Engine Three, which I think that we bought that in, I want to say ninety-one or ninety-two. That truck has maybe thirty-seven thousand miles on it. It's not used as much.
This must have a lot of miles on it.
This, yeah. Plus the hours on this are a lot more, so you gauge it off of that. But NFPA sets these standards, and now they're more important because about ten years ago, the heavy truck industry got into really emphasizing on crash safety standards. And, and they use that in fire apparatus also. And you're getting to see, like, about three months ago, there was a crash in Texas, a pickup truck T-boned the truck, a fire truck, an engine, and it flipped the engine and three guys got hurt critical. They survived, but so it's, it's like taking a ninety-eight Chevrolet and putting a new motor in it now and saying you got a new vehicle, but you have the same technology as ninety-eight.
Well, I think, you know, certainly you and I talked about this and I, I think I might have talked to Bob as well about this. To me, it seems like, you know, it's a logical use of the funds. And it certainly leaves, even taking that large amount out, you still have a lot of funds left to be able to use in other strategic areas with regards to the town.
I do want to add that the, as Sean mentioned, the price tag has gone up significantly from the time that we, the Long Range Capital.
So this number's probably low.
This number is outdated. The number that I was telling you was we're looking at eight fifty if we were going to do this. So it is significant. So, it is significant. It's, it's a significant cost.
But you're gonna be chasing that cost uphill constantly.
And we're gonna be, and it's also something that we would, if we don't fund it through American Rescue Funds, it's going to be, have, have to be funded through a capital lease at some point. So, it's not, it's not an expense that we can really get away from. It's just one that we would have to delay, you know, so.
So, is this something the sooner it's voted on and approved, the price will be locked in?
According to what I talked to Ray, is as soon as we, he knows that we have the funds, you know, as long as he gets permission from Ryan and from Bob, he can start making some phone calls. Now, we can do this because there are time limits on when we need to have the money allocated and then the money, the actual equipment obtained. So, I think, what is it, December 31st of 2023, we need it allocated? And then, December 31st of 2024, we need it, we need to obtain.
To take delivery. Now, I, I'm hopeful that they may change that rule because the supply chain has caused so much, so many issues that we're, we're in the same boat as everyone else as far as getting products and getting equipment that, that we've ordered. And so, if, I would say that if the board, this board is serious about looking, continuing to look into this, I would say that at our second meeting in October, we invite Chief Shea to come to, to speak with us and, and we can get more information at that time and potentially, you know, make a decision then or at a sometime. If we are going to do this, I, I would suggest that we get the ball rolling sooner than later because, because of that lead time to get all this put together. And also, because we're using federal funds, that we have to go out to bid for all this too. It's not, there's a, there's a procurement process that we, we need to follow. And that's all gonna take some time, so we.
And, and that's the thing, that's over two years from now. And it seems like a long time, but it's not.
Well, I mean, isn't, hasn't Bob been struggling just to get that one piece of equipment? That, that box truck? Because the chassis, but you can't get the box or vice versa? I can't remember what it was, but.
It was the same way with the transfer station with the roll-off truck.
Right.
That took months longer than expected.
So, I can only imagine what a fire truck's gonna take.
Yes.
I was talking to Ray too also. There's a, a lot of manufacturers will put spec trucks through their line. And if you're able to get on a spec truck soon enough, it's already scheduled to go through their production line. And if you have to make little tweaks to that, you can do that. So, instead of wasting time as far as having to spec a whole truck out on our end of it, we could get a bid.
By one that's on order already, that makes perfect sense.
Right.
Especially, I know Dave said we've had breakdowns in reliability with this in the past. What's it gonna be like for the next two years while we're waiting for the replacement?
I, I, I'm with you. I mean, I would like to add one thing to this. Ryan, while, while we're talking about expenditures, in the same vein, and I know it's only 20 grand, but I would like to see if we can build into that, the cameras and the fire alarms for town garage. Because as important as one fire truck is, God forbid, if we ever had a fire out in that garage, we would lose everything we have.
That has to happen. Now, we have that fun, Tom, Tom's here. Isn't that the fire alarms at the town garage? We're, we're moving forward with that already, correct?
Fire alarm responded in another area.
Okay.
So, we don't have the cameras yet, but, but that is something, cameras are important. That's another, that's another topic. I wasn't gonna, wasn't going to bring that, that up tonight, but I, I, at some point, I would like to talk about possibly using American Rescue Funds for, for cameras at, I know Ralph, you, you've mentioned Town Hall Parts and New Park. And, and so, that, that's something that I think that we, we need to talk about at some point. I'm not, not really, I didn't prepare anything on that today, but I think you're right, John.
And I've always, I, I've talked with a few guys from the town crew over the last year. And one item that came up and I never, you know, I, you don't think about these things. But, you know, we all have animals building nests in our engines. You, you, you find it all the time. And it, they got a beautiful layout out there in that L-shaped building, but everything that we own is in that building. And there really, there are no, there are no buffers between equipment, there's nothing. If, you know, if you're out plowing for 18 hours straight in a snowstorm and you got a squirrel nest in your engine and you come in and park that thing before you can get out there, that could take off and you could lose half the equipment you got up there. So, I think we need to really focus on that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get there. We, we have the funds, we're, we're just moving through.
And I'll put a check next to this one here.
So, it sounds like there's some consensus to at least continue the conversations regarding the, the fire engine number two?
To have Bob and Ray both come in at the next meeting.
Yes.
All right, I will reach out to Bob and Ray and invite them to speak. And we'll put that specifically on the agenda for, for next meeting. So, good.
Sounds good.
The other thing, I, I wanted to, to see how the, what the board felt on this one is, I've been receiving a lot of emails or comments from our seniors in town, who, as Tom mentioned, use the, the rideshare program with the senior center. And Lynn and Alexis do a wonderful job making sure that her seniors have rides to doctor's appointments, to, you know, places that they need to get to. And oftentimes, they, you know, they're, they're unable to drive themselves sometimes. And this is a service that has exploded since we've, since we've come out of COVID. And so, unfortunately, I had a conversation with Lynn today and we actually increased the budget for the rideshare program. But as of right now, the, the senior center is having to turn down up to eight rides a month from, and that's a lot. So, it's not something that we can fix at the moment, but certainly the next, you know, budget cycle, I'd like, you know, we're gonna have to take a look at that budget. But I did go for a ride, the, the van drivers that we have, and they do a wonderful job. I took a tour around town because they wanted to show me the, you know, the buses that we use and the equipment that we use. And I have to say, it's, some of it is, is pretty outdated. We have a, a van, or it's a bus, that we received from the Red Cross and it's a 2009. And it, I, going through town is a very, very bumpy ride on this. And so, I think that a good use of American Rescue Funds would be a replacement for that bus. I asked Lynn what the best, what would help the senior center the most? And she said a 12-person passenger bus would help the most amount of seniors. The, the van drivers could use that. It's roughly, the estimate is 115,000 for it. But our seniors, our seniors use this as a service. And I, I personally feel like it would, it's, it's money worth spent in the community. But I wanted to open it up, you know, to the, to the board and see what you guys thought about that.
I've been concerned about that for a while now. I, I've talked to some elderly folks who say that now they, they're, they're afraid to leave the house. They're afraid to drive. Their, you know, the doctor's appointments, you know, doctors now are being very specific about what time you have to come because you only have certain people in the office at certain times. And a lot of folks don't have someone to get them there. And this, I think this is critical. I mean, we've got a lot of elderly folks, we have to take care of them. I'm curious, this 12-passenger you're talking about, it's gotta have a wheelchair lift too, right?
It does, yeah, I was, I should say with a lift. And, and Lynn said that the reason for a 12-passenger over an eight-passenger would be because a 12-passenger, you're able to fit more than one person in a wheelchair. You could fit at least two, she said, in, with a 12-person van. And so, that's why she suggested that. Yeah, no, the lift is, good point. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. So, we certainly would want a lift with this.
It sounds like we're, we're spending money like water here, but the, this, the, the two items are really what this is all about.
So, yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been kind of, I, I have a list as, as department heads and as selectmen and, and people, you know, and what I see in the office and, and the needs that I see. And that, this has been one that, that has repeatedly come up from, from seniors, from not just the seniors, but the drivers themselves wanted, wanted to show me the, what, what they're working with right now. And, and I think we can, we can do a little better for, for our seniors.
Now, the van that we'd be replacing is that a eight or 12 that we have?
It's a, oh, you know what? I think it's an eight. I wanna say it's an eight.
And then, that's not.
It has a lift.
And then, we also share one with?
We share one with Cromwell. That's the, that's our newest, that's our newest vehicle right now. I believe that's a 17 or an 18. So, our newest one's already five years old. And we only get it two weeks of the month because we share it with Cromwell. And so, it, it is a great van, or, or we use it when we have it, we use it all the time. And so, when we don't use it, that's when, you know, we have to use other, other vehicles that aren't, aren't as nice.
Right.
So, if this is, if this is something that the board is interested in, again, I think I'll, I'll add it to a future agenda with more information. Maybe I'll invite Lynn down as well from the senior center.
Is this as critical to move on because of supply chain issues as the fire?
We can, we can, we don't have to move on that quickly if you want, the, the.
No, I'm, I'm thinking just the opposite. I'm wondering if we wanna try to get all these folks in and address both these issues so you can, you can move forward.
We can, we, yeah, it's, I would say that the, the fire engine is, is more critical because it takes a lot more time. Whereas, we can get a van, you know, we can get a bus that, because they're available, there's a lot more that goes into the, the fire truck. But certainly, they, you know, the sooner we could, the sooner we approve it and go through that process, the, you know, that still takes time. It's not like we can just pick one up next week. You know, we still have to follow all the rules.
Yeah, I mean, if we're in agreement on both of them, then we wanna move forward. And let's move forward as quickly as we can with both of them.
So, I'll add, I'll add both of these to the next agenda.
I think it's perfect.
Okay. And that's, that's what I have. If, if anyone wants to, to see my, my list, I can, I can pass this. This is, this is what I have. This is, this is, these are some of the, you know, some of this is taken from the Long Range Capital Commission. And these are, these are just different things that are on the list.
Ryan, were we getting any kind of reimbursement on the body cams for the police department? Because it was a state mandate.
We're still working on the reimbursement. It's, it gets a little complicated and, but we're supposed to. Tom, is it fair to say we should be getting reimbursement? Or, it's a little?
184 if not part of the 12. So, a total of that was 240,000. But there should, there could possibly be some monies less spent. Even if they were less spent, then they would be dismembered and they would most often become available and to be used on some other projects. The ones that would be, once we get reimbursement from the state, on the state side, and once we know, we're, we're currently, we're reading on a part, a part of a project for this building here that wireless is done, which is part of the body camera. It's about the wireless connectivity improvement in this building. It's had, it's hard for the cameras to work properly out in the parking lots. So, that project, David is working with the advisors there to run that component of the project. And, so there's still components of this getting done. But the body camera information has been submitted by the police department and we're waiting on, on permission approval, payment of that money. We don't know exactly the amount we're getting.
On the bottom here, did we fund for public works, the fuel pump?
We did. The fuel pump was funded.
Okay.
We're working on that as well. So, those, those were the two items that I wanted to talk about. If, if another, if anyone else wants to talk about something tonight, we can. Or we can, and again, this will be on next month's agenda and we can continue discussions on, on this.
What's the land acquisition fund?
The land acquisition fund is something that we, we allocate $50,000 every year for open space. And we use that most recently to purchase the parcels on Brownstone Avenue, the 222, 230, and 248. And so, we use open space to, we fund that $50,000 a year. And the, the plan, the goal is that when, when there are properties available, that the town would have an interest in it.
But why is it on here for 75,000?
I think they might have wanted to increase that to 75,000, up from 50,000. I, that would be a question for the commission. But I, it seems to be that they wanted us to increase that, that amount.
Okay. I think when it comes to the budget next year, we should talk about that. Because 50,000 does not go very far in buying land nowadays.
So, that is in our, in our ordinances. We have an open space ordinance and, and it was 25,000 at one point. And then, you know, the board of selectmen felt the need to increase it to 50,000. And I would agree with you. I mean, 50,000, it, even though that does accumulate in the fund and then you can, you can use, you know, more than that, it does, 50,000 even four years later is, you know, only 200,000 and you can't. And that goes fast. So, that's something that, that we could consider if you wanted to take a look at that ordinance. And we could mandate that we put more in the budget for next year if you wanted to change the ordinance. That would be one way to, to do that. We'd have to go through a public hearing process and all that. But I know open space is important. There's several groups that have, that are constantly looking to preserve land and, and it's, it's definitely a worthy cause. And there's other properties that might not be for sale now, but we might be interested in if we did have a larger fund and they were to become available.
I think we should put it on one of our future agendas and talk about it and go forward with it, in my opinion.
Okay, we can do that. Do we wanna do it the next meeting or do we wanna just, we'll do it within the next, like, either October, November? Sound good?
Yeah, November.
That sounds like our next meeting's stacked pretty good.
That's what I was.
November's good.
Okay.
So, I would suggest with regards to these funds, that perhaps maybe we would have a, a meeting in the near future because obviously the next one's busy. But maybe with Officer Malardo and, and maybe talk about security cameras and where we would best, you know, from his experience, where we may best benefit with putting cameras. Because I would think we would wanna do that under executive session because we don't wanna be sharing where cameras are or aren't.
That's a really good idea, yeah. Yeah, we can, I can do that, I can reach out.
Cameras here if you go around the backside.
To Captain Malardo. Would you like to, can you come up and say it though? I should have had you come up before. I apologize to anybody online here.
On the open space land acquisition fund, I mean, the ordinance states the minimum. So, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude, preclude you from putting more. But in the past, boards have had very hard time making that minimum contribution. And one, one year was not even in the budget and had to be added as a fourth quarter transfer. So, there are times when it's hard to increase because you don't want that tax effect. So, nothing is stopping you from adding more. But if you change your ordinance to make it required, you gotta do it. Those are things that you gotta, you gotta do. You got, you got capital concerns and needs all the time and you can put as much you want in capital. But it's what, how do you wanna affect your tax base?
Right.
That's a really good point.
I think we can wait till the budget to discuss that.
That's why we have an accountant.
It's good to understand how it works unless you have a minimum, not that that's it.
Perfect, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, so I think, and so I, I will reach out to Captain Malardo, I think that's a good idea.
I have one other question on here. It has roof repairs for town wall.
That has not been addressed yet.
How serious is the condition?
Uh, it's, it's, it's in need of, it's in need of repair. But I believe Tom and I were just talking about that earlier today. And, and there is a, a way to fund that? Were we talking about that?
I'm not sure. That's a way to wait a minute.
There are some, I can see from my back door, there's some shingles missing on that side of the roof.
I mean, what I do know on the topic, I don't know a lot because it's not my forte, but I do know that, uh, the previous Director of Public Works got a quote on the EZ-AQ system, um, that had, you know, come up with a price. We couldn't, we were trying to attempt to fund some of that through the town building maintenance fund. We also have the continuation of this building to do the remainder of the windows. So it's a kind of a play on, you know, where, you know, we need to, all, you know, the, uh, new, new Director of Public Works needs to review that as well as Ryan and myself and kind of come up with a plan of which ones and what's fallen where. And if, if it shakes out that we can't, we don't have enough for all areas, then either, either it might be something that you would, we'd come back and request through this way, or, or it will be something that we would request probably through the capital fund in, in the future here. So I mean, it's, but it definitely, there, there is a need at a point in time for that because as, as we all know, some of the shingles are blowing off. So there, there is a need. Like I said, if you look at the capital fund, there's lots of needs, so I don't, no one necessarily has to tell you to prioritize that right now. And it's not necessarily my area of expertise, but there will, you know, we, it does need to occur at some point.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any questions or before Tom sits down? Go in once? Join twice?
I'm good.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. So let's, let's move on. We'll, we, I think that's a great discussion and we'll move on. Uh, to item ten on the agenda, which is discussion. And, uh, there is a resolution before you, tribute to honor Ruth and Nunzi Mayo. This was something that, uh, we, uh, we looked at and, uh, Michelle and I at the Town Hall, I, I spoke with Michelle about ways that we've honored residents in the past who've gone, gone above and beyond, uh, helping the town and bettering the town. And I know John had, had read the letter from the friends of the, of the food bank at our last meeting, asking us if we would, if we would rename the food bank in, in, um, uh, Ruth and Nunzi Mayo's honor. And it, I think it's a wonderful idea, but in, in practicality, it does pose some like legal challenges when you, when you rename, uh, something like the food bank or, or the senior center. So.
I did speak with a few people about this over the last week. And I said, the way that the document they presented to us was written, they referred to it as a food bank. But in conversation, it sounded that they were talking more like the food pantry, the actual physical.
The room.
The room where the food is stored, you know, and it, and I said, because I was going to bring that back here tonight, and I think that's kind of where you're going with this anyway. I think, you know, that way we don't get into that confusion over how a check is made out for, excuse me, a donation to the food bank. Because it really is, I guess you call it the food pantry that's renamed for them. But, um, you know, I, I think there, the folks I spoke with seem to be in agreement and I think you've nailed it right here.
Thanks. And yeah, thank you to Michelle too, because she helped out with this. And I think, so what this would do is it would essentially name the, the lower level of the senior center. The Ruth and Nunzi Mayo level of, so the, the whole bottom floor would be named after them. And what we would do is we would put a plaque on the wall by the entrance. So when people come in, there'll be a plaque and, and this is, this is a template here on the resolution of what that would, what that would say. Uh, and so, I mean, it can be changed too if you, you know. But this is, this is the general idea of it. And I think, you know, John, you're right. I think this way there's no legal problems. We don't, you know, but we still absolutely want to honor, um, both of them for all their many, many years of work for this town.
Because they did the same thing upstairs with the room being.
With, um, wheezy rice. Yeah, same thing. Yeah. No, I, I, I think you're, you're right on target with what, after the conversation I had, this is just what I think they were looking.
Would you like to introduce your position?
Yeah, I would. Um, I'll, I'll do this and I have another question slash idea. Sorry, guys. Um, resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, October fifth, twenty twenty-two. Tribute to Ruth and Nunzi Mayo. Whereas Ruth and Nunzi Mayo have been respected pillars of the community, serving as the Portland Food Bank coordinators for decades, providing food and provisions to those in need all year long. And whereas Ruth and Nunzi's efforts have been acknowledged and celebrated by being recipients of the two thousand nine Ralph Paley Spirit of Portland Award and Ruth's twenty twenty-two Humanitarian of the Year Award. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen in recognition of the Mayo's accomplishments and important work in the community, hereby, hereby pays tribute to Ruth and Nunzi Mayo by dedicating the lower level of the senior center in their honor. This level is dedic, and the sign would read, this level is dedicated in gratitude to Ruth and Nunzi Mayo, Food Bank coordinators in honor and recognition of their commitment and exemplary service. May continue to inspire all that work here and beyond, dated October fifth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make a motion. We go with this.
I second.
I think Bobby got it.
Yeah, he got it.
All right, discussion.
The only, the only question I had, and again, the, the folks that really brought this up and felt strongly about it. I honestly think if there's a, a presentation of some sort to Ruth and Nunzi, that those folks need to be a critical part of this because I mean, this was their baby. They really feel they deserve this. So, um, if you would like, I would be willing to take lead role, reaching out to them and see how they feel. Because I understand Nunzi's not too well. Uh, so how they feel we could best accomplish this, whether they want to have them come here and present the plaque and then hang it, or have the group meet them at the senior center with the plaque on the wall. But, you know, I'd be willing to coordinate with that with them and angle from there.
That'd be great. Yeah. And it's, you know, we'll, if this, if this gets approved, which I think it, it probably will, um, then we'll get working on the plaque right away.
Perfect.
I don't know how long that, that takes, but we'll try to get that.
That, excuse me, I don't think that's long at all, but.
Okay. So then, yeah, so if you can, if you can coordinate, see what they want to do.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
All right. Should we, I'll call the question or is, I need more discussion on this?
The only thing I would say is you're probably missing a period at the end of the sentence on it, what it may read. I mean, I would assume that if you're going to capitalize the "may" at the beginning of the second line, then you probably should have a, a period at the end of the first line.
A period at the end of the first.
You are probably correct.
Okay. So are you making a motion to amend it?
You'll amend it with a period.
Amend it with periods after service and beyond? Yes. All right. Call for the question?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you. That was great, Ryan. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, John. And thank you to the, the friends of the food bank too. All right. Next up, item eleven is appointments to boards and commissions. Do you have any appointments? Do you have any appointments?
Nope.
Okay. So we'll go on to refunds of excess payments. Bobby, would you like to?
Sure.
Thank you.
Make a motion for refund of excess payment for Victor G. Banano, thirteen dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Armando Vargas, two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Albert Costa, seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Toyota Lease Trust, one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and one cent.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Itron Incorporated, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment for Karen McCarthy and William McCarthy, ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
All those in favor?
I'll second that.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment Hyundai leasing titling trust, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment Hyundai lease titling trust, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment Hyundai lease titling trust, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Michael Angeli, four dollars.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payments for Tricia A. Smith, eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. Under status reports, I want to just let everyone know that, I'll just give a brief update on the track because on Friday, we entered into the agreement with SLR, the architect engineering firm that's going to be doing the design work on the track. So thanks to the board for giving approval to allow us to do that. And it's exciting to see this, this progress go. I also, I know I did post about it, but the remediation work on Brownstone Avenue is currently underway. It's, uh, it's really cool to see, uh, if you drive by and, and you can, you can see all the work that they're doing. They were not able to do any work the past two days because of rain, but they're, they'll be back there tomorrow, I'm told. And they're going to get, keep going with all this remediation. So, so that is also a, a good thing. And I think that's, that's all I have. I do want to mention though, I guess now would be the time that the Portland Fair is this weekend. And this is a, this is a big deal for Portland because this is the first time we've had the Portland Agricultural Fair since twenty nineteen. So I, I want to encourage all of the selectmen, all of our viewers and, and all of the residents and, uh, Portland and neighboring towns to please come to the fair, uh, see us. Uh, the Board of Selectmen is invited at five forty-five on Friday. Is the opening ceremony of the fair. So I hope, uh, I hope you guys can make it if you're, if you're in the area. And, uh, I'll see you at the fair. So just wanted to put, point that out. So that's, that's all I have.
And having been involved in that from, for many years, a lot of work goes into that. So we, we owe kudos to all the, the few people that do a lot of work down there.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, actually, I have a light load. I only have, uh, parking wrecked, meat. And really the thing to say about that was, um, all the work and the discussions we had with regards to the five K race and the event afterward and a little discussion about the winter event, but there'll be more discussion along that one. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ralph.
I have one, Ryan. The, so the Committee on Solidarity, uh, last night went around placing signs recognizing, uh, the police department, the fire department, Public Works, and also places a sign in front of Town Hall, recognizing all the first responders for First Responders Month of October. And I believe today they featured the police, a little write-up on Facebook on a community page. And I believe this weekend, that same article will be in River East for the police department.
Thank you.
And then every week for the rest of October, they will feature, uh, fire departments, the public work team and the CERT team. So just, uh, that's, that'll be a up and coming in River East.
You guys are doing great work.
All, 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 all critical parts of our town. So thank you to the solidarity committee as well. We'll, we'll do something, I think, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone have anything else under status reports? Okay. We'll move to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience?
No, nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat? Okay. Uh, general informal discussion. Does anyone have anything tonight?
I'd like to bring up one thing. I don't know if it's, I think, I think it's appropriate. I think it's more than appropriate. But, um, seeing as in recent months, we have implemented the recognition of farming in Portland. Uh, I, I think you all know that Dicky Gada passed away a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I, I, for, I know for all that they've done, the Gada family for this town for years, and just in recognition of the importance of farming in town, I just want to, I think, I'd like to pass on condolences from this board to Jackie and her family. Years ago, I was the, I worked with Ruth Calendar, God, and she was still alive, um, on the Historical Society calendar. In that particular year, they wanted to recognize old family businesses in town. And we had Petzl's on there. We had, um, Peterson Oil. We had a bunch of different things and we had Gadas. And I think at that time, Mrs. Gada was still alive and we got the photograph and I can still see in my mind, I wish I could find the calendar. It was of the great grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. Gada, taken around turn of the century, nineteen hundred. And, and they just, they were, they, classic Italian couple, because they were fresh from Italy. And had, I can remember he had knickers on and the big high boots. They were a farm family and they had planted, they had recently planted their orchard. And they, uh, as it said in Dicky's obituary, you know, they've been a, an active farm family in this town since eighteen ninety-eight. Uh, and I know that, um, you know, they're, they've got one or, I think, two of their children that are actively pursuing the family business. And I just think that's great. And I just want to recognize Dicky Gada for all his hard work and everything he's done for Portland.
Thank, thank you, John. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm really glad you, you brought that up. And certainly I know this, this board sends its, uh, its deepest sympathies to the Gada family, to Jackie and the family. And, you know, Dicky Gada was a staple of Portland.
One of the hardest working guys I've ever met in my life. You know, he was just always going, twenty-four seven.
Dicky gave me my first job at age fourteen, picking, picking corn in the fields.
There you go.
And also, I'll just point out, I think him and Jackie were both recipients of the Paley Spirit of Portland Award.
He'll be sorely missed.
He will. He will. Thank you.
I had a question. I know with Public Works, they treat all the town dump trucks and stuff for, you know, the corrosive salt in the wintertime. Do we treat other town vehicles, especially fire trucks?
I don't have the answer to that. Uh, I don't know. I, I can find out for you for next meeting if you'd like.
All right.
I can, I'll talk with Ryan O'Halpin, our director on, he's, he's, uh, not in tomorrow, but I'll talk with him and I'll get an answer for you.
All right. I know you said we were moving forward with the technology in the, the planning department. Uh, are we still going to be moving forward with like credit card payments at the transfer station?
Yeah, that's on, it's on my list. Yes. Uh, you know, we, I, I don't have an update or a timetable for that, but yes, we need, I do agree. After the land use office, I would say that the transfer station would be, you know, the, the next in line for that. So, so yes, I, I definitely want credit card payments at the transfer station. I think it's important for, um, you know, a lot of people don't carry cash on them.
No.
And, um.
If I go into the store to buy a pack of gum, I have to use my debit card. I don't have cash in me.
Yeah. So, no, you're right. You, uh, so, but I don't, I don't have a timetable on that, but that is, yeah.
For the senior centers grant, do we have a timeframe for when that's going to start moving forward since it was awarded?
So awarded, Tom, I, where, where are we at with this, the, as far as the timetable? I, I did see a timetable, but I don't, I don't have, uh, if I had to take a guess, I would say probably the spring of twenty-three. Does that sound reasonable to you, Tom?
Senior Center's vision?
Yeah.
What, what was the question?
Questions, a timetable for like when.
They expect things to start being constructed? Or bid or?
I think probably in the next month or two, you'll have a bid. Because I think some of the prevailing wage information's been requested. Silver Petrocelli's done a nice job putting together, uh, the drawings and the bids specs. We, uh, I think, uh, Ryan's just recently signed the agreement with, um, with the, uh, with the state. So, uh, in that period, there'll be a bid and then the review, the bids will be reviewed by Silver. And we would pick the little bit better and then, uh, award the contract and, uh, work would be completed. Some things are, you know, it's, it's, I think a lot of that's going to be lead time on items. Possibly the generator could have a lead time. Some of the kitchen equipment, uh, with, uh, some of the work we've been doing on the board bedside is going to be. Some of the kitchen equipment, with, with some of the work we've been doing on the board bedside, there's been longer lead times on the kitchen equipment. So some of those kitchen equipments, because they're commercial, could have a longer lead time. So I think it's gonna be once you get the bid in and then see what the GC thinks, the, you know, how those, all those other components are gonna come in at.
All right.
Thank you, Tom. Is the microphone over there on?
Yes.
Okay. The camera didn't go to Tom when he was talking, so I wasn't sure, but it picked him up, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Well, that leads to my next question. Can we look at getting a formal proposal on Mike's microphones for, in here? I know we had given a rough price, but can we?
Yeah, that is.
A solid number so that we know whether it's in our realm of spending or not.
Okay. We can, we can do that. You're, yeah, we can. Yeah. I mean, as far as a timetable though, can you give, can we hold off a little bit on it? But like, we, we will do that.
I just wanna make sure we talk about it in the future.
It's on, oh, it's on my list. It's on the list. It's just, I, you know, I, I wanted to get through some of the, you know, the, the fire truck, the, the time sensitive things first, you know. But yeah, we can do that. I don't wanna do too much at one. You know what I mean? But yeah, absolutely.
All right. One of the other things I saw was for the clean energy, they were talking about looking at the transfer station for the solar panels again. And possibly the housing authority having them on their buildings. So I hope that if that comes before us, that we can do, we can push that forward. Cause they were saying like with the housing, it could cut their energy bills by fifty percent.
Yeah. So yeah, actually, yeah, you're getting ahead of, of me on this. That'll be on our next meeting in October. I, I had a meeting with Robert Cle and Alan Savins last week. And so that, that solar panels at the transfer station is back, the programs, as you, you remember last year, we, we talked about it. We almost, we almost applied last year, but there was a real time crunch by the time we, we got to see everything. And so now there's actually two different programs that we could apply for. And so I invited Rob and Alan to give a presentation at our next meeting to kinda go over that, to bring the board up to speed. And then we can make a decision on that. But, but yes, we, we certainly wanna move ahead and apply and get solar panels at the transfer station. I think that's a, that's a big win for everyone. So, so yeah, no, we definitely wanna do that and, and you're, you're right on time here. So that's, that's good.
Okay. Last, not for us, but more for the general public, the status for Brainerd Place, is everything moving along how it should be?
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because at our last meeting, I had said that we were gonna review, we were gonna have a contract or an amended agreement to review tonight. We were gonna have, we were gonna go into executive session. We were going to have our attorney present to review that amendment. And I don't, I don't have, I haven't even, we haven't started on it since because there's been some delay, not on the town side, but on the developer side as far as. Just, I think their attorney was away, you know, just not, you know, just things haven't connected. But, but we will, I've slated, I think it's our November second meeting to have that contract done. So, and our attorney is penciled in to attend that meeting. So that's on the agenda for November second, an executive session, and I hope to have that amended agreement ready for this board to, to review for that, for them. So yeah, thank you. I do, on that topic, I do wanna say I did send, I did send the developer another notice that they are currently out of compliance with their fixed assessment agreement again. September thirtieth was the deadline to file the building permits for both the Sage House and the Brainerd House. And they did not do that by the thirtieth. So just like in the past, when they didn't do building D or building E, you know, I, we would send them a certified letter notifying them that they're in default of the agreement. And then they do have sixty days to cure that default. And so the, the time started ticking. It was October first when I, you know, when they were in default. And that was a Saturday, so the letter went out in the mail on Monday, October third. So just to let everyone know that that is where we're at on that. But I am told that the, the foundation should begin in mid-October, which is just basically next week.
Just gonna ask, cause it looks like there's a lot of excavation going on in the Southern Corner there.
Yeah. So they're getting ready for that. And so they are, everything's still moving ahead. And, and we still plan to, you know, we're still looking at this project. It's still going well. There's really no, there's, it's all good news when you look at the site and you look at the progress and, and a lot of things are just kind of, you know, details that will work out, you know, but.
I just wanted to ask because I know people around town ask, it's on Facebook, they ask, they get the wrong information on Facebook and people speculate about stuff. So you have the most contact with the developers, so I'd like them to hear from you that way.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I visited the site, I think it was two weeks ago with Dan Bertram. And we, he kinda went over, you know, what, what they're doing, the progress that they've made. And, and that, that's when he told me the timeline for the foundation. So I haven't spoken with Dan since too much because as I said, I know he's busy on some other projects, but we do have to connect on this amendment to the fixed assessment agreement. We just haven't connected yet on that.
So they plan on construction right through the winter then?
Yeah. Yes. Yep.
There'll be a lot less gray areas on Facebook when concrete and steel begin to show.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for general informal discussion?
No, I was gonna ask about Brainerd, so he, he maybe said a bunch.
I should just add, you know, Brainerd update every, every meeting.
Like EDC at every meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be.
It's the hot topic, so.
Everybody wants to know. Yeah, and rightfully so. It's the biggest project we've had in Portland maybe ever, right?
My lifetime.
Yeah. So, okay. I don't have anything on follow-up items this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bobby? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? All right. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.